Good evening, it is six o'clock, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Laguna Beach Unified School Board Open Session is called Order. Let's start with Natalie leaving us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you Natalie. This moves us to, oh, see, there is no report out of closed session. And we're moving to four D, the adoption of the agenda. Dr. Gloria, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we're gonna pull nine A for another time.
I think you can have a motion in a second to adopt tonight's agenda as revised.
Moved. Second.
Thank you. Natalie, may I have your vote for the student provisional vote?
Yes.
Okay, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. This moves us to five A. I don't see anyone here. I will save my explanation of our laws that govern our norms for another, for another time. And Clerk Osborne, is there anyone, do you have any blue cards, though, for anyone wishing to speak to non-agenda items?
And no comment cards received tonight.
Okay, thank you. And this leaves us to six reports. And Natalie, it is so good to see you, and do you have a report this evening?
Isabel is on, oh, six, I'm gonna be giving her a report also tonight. So I'm gonna start with hers. At Thurston, all the TMS students are taking their second already diagnostic assessment in English and mathematics to measure their growth so far this year. Thurston Student Store is back open and is very popular for the students who love buying things during their time there. Administration visited classrooms and spoke to all the students about behavior expectations, character values, and what it means to make positive contributions to each other and our campus, and what it means to be an upstander. Thurston is plan, Thurston is also planning to invite a trainer on restorative practices to school-wide virtual PD to help us explore the possibilities of adopting a practice of restorative circles during the, during our advisement periods. And at LBHS, this month in English class, each grade will be reading a book assigned to their grade level for flow, fire for freshmen, land for sophomores, ocean for juniors, and water for seniors. Natalie, Natalie and I are currently reading the book Deep by James Nestor. Last week, we also had a College Unplugged Panel in the Artist Theater for Juniors and Seniors, in which LBHS alumni gave talks about their college experiences and answered questions. I got many feedback from students, and they said it was just very informative and gave them like an inside look on to college and what it's like after high school. Winter Farm was also just a few weeks away, so I know like us in the ASB right now, we're planning all of that, it's gonna be in Fullerton, the kids are really excited. And we're excited for the pep assembly also, which I hear the dance team preparing every single day for. And after finals, students should have gotten their finalized grades for the first semester at the beginning of last week, so everyone's passed the first semester and ready for the next and still going strong. And lastly, for LBHS, winter sports are in full spring. Sports include boys' basketball and soccer, girls' basketball, soccer, and water polo. Trials and training have already begun for several spring sports as well. And another thing I'm gonna add is that there's, um, uh, with all the other California student board members, there's less meeting tonight with a few other teachers from a couple of their districts and some student board members are gonna be attending, and so it's about talking about the new like California framework for math. So it's just an interesting thing that some of the student board members around California are doing also. And as for the elementary schools and Elmore, Elmore students are excited for the talent show additions, which will be held tomorrow, and even more excited for the big show on February third at the Artist Theater. They had their positive behavior intervention and support assemblies this week also for all students to teach students the right way to do things at Elmore. They got a happy and positive attitude from the students about the assembly, and now they're ready to finish the year strong. Students, students are also in the process of being regrouped for tier one, tier two, and tier three interventions. The teachers are using the results from the iReady diagnostic and Dibbles, Dibble and, and classroom assessments to form the new groups. So that's it, Elmore, and then lastly for TOW, they're in the midst of giving their mid-year benchmark iReady assessment, and they look forward to celebrating the growth of all students, remembering to congratulate the students on all their achievements along the way. On Monday, they were happy to launch the second session of their after-school program classes offerings and have four hundred, four hundred and sixty-six students attending classes. There's classes such as Lego Masters, chess, programming, origami, yoga, and sports, music, Spanish, science, jewelry-making, and more. They look forward to an exciting session and being able to join in these classes. Yeah, that's a wrap.
Thank you for that wrap. That's awesome. This takes us to B, Bargain Union Representatives. And tonight we have CSEA's second Vice President, she'll represent report on CSE's work on behalf of LBSD employees. And it is so good to see you, Miss, I know, I'm a slaughter, but I'm trying to, is it, is it X? The kids say it better than I do. The floor is yours.
Or Miss Z. But thank you for letting me be here tonight. Um, we just wanna thank the administration for giving us the ability for release time to meet as a negotiations team and prepare our sunshine letter. We finished that last week, and then the retirement of incentive's been distributed, and there's a lot of chatter with potential retirees on the CSEA side. And wanna thank the administration and Board of Directors for moving this forward at the request of CSEA, and Margaret and Elizabeth will be attending the Governor's Workshop. And we appreciate the transparency of working collaboratively with the administration on understanding the in-depth knowledge gained at these meetings. And all of our site reps at our five sites have the opportunity to participate in a site rep training through our CSEA Fourth District on January nineteenth in the evening, virtually. And on another note, just want to say I appreciate and we appreciate the way everyone has pulled together the last couple of weeks coming back from everything and, and so many people gone, and, um, I think everyone's done a pretty wonderful job and we see what you guys are doing across the street, so just thank you for keeping us all together during this time.
Thank you for your report. And next is President Hopper speaking on behalf of Labuca employees that the union represents, the floor is yours. It's good to see you here.
Good evening, I I attended our California Teachers Association Regional President's Meeting this month, which highlighted the Governor's Budget and CTA's commitment to in-person learning and keeping schools open, along with their resolve to blunt the impact of staff shortages with the COVID, that the COVID virus may cause. And I'm happy to say that, given all the safeguards presented by CTA, our district continues to fully meet every criteria presently, and as they also have done in the past throughout this whole pandemic. So, and also, we have to mention our nurses who are working above and beyond, and it was such great foresight to have two nurses with, who are helping to navigate the staff and our families through COVID. The rules change all the time, and we really rely on them for their input. Because it's, it's just hard to keep track of it all, but they are doing a tremendous job. Also, our district administrators, I have to say, you know, I agree with you, say, so that they pull together, I mean, you guys are like campus supervisors, your cafeteria workers, your teachers, your administrators, you're like everything that whatever needs to be done, and, um, you know, you're there to fill in and, and what can't you do? Just what job can't you do right now? So, um, it's been amazing, it's been noted that you've been on all our campuses helping out. And also, our teachers remain resilient and continue to help students manage their classwork while they are out on COVID. And with negotiations beginning in early March, we will be surveying our members in the coming weeks in order to present our sunshine letter and articles of interest. Thank you.
Thank you, President Hopper. We do not have our SROs this evening, so we're gonna move to Superintendent Dr. Gloria.
Good to see you. Kind of on the same lines as both of our associations. I'm just really grateful that we've been able to stay open for our students and, uh, and to be able to keep our staff safe and, uh, and healthy as well as our students. And, um, you know, we've been all doing different jobs, and so I, while I appreciate the kudos of Sarah and Thesa, they themselves have truly stepped up on the campuses and are helping to lead the charge and just doing above and beyond every day. So I know everybody's pretty exhausted, looking forward to a three-day weekend, I think, I know I am. And we will continue to stay the course, that is our goal. We continue to procure additional tests, continue to navigate, as Sarah points out, the ever-changing requirements and guidance that we receive, just got some new stuff late last night. And, and we expect things will continue to evolve and change, so we appreciate everyone's flexibility, including those, uh, those folks who are at home watching, realizing that, uh, you know, we are all trying to do our best to navigate this in a safe, a safe manner. So I really appreciate the board's support as well. We wouldn't be in this position to be, if it wasn't for the board. You've been really proactive and very supportive of our, of our work, making sure that we're ready to go. And, uh, you know, since it was winter break, there's not a ton of things, um, you know, it's winter break seems like a month ago, when it was really only a week and a half ago that we came back. But really not a ton to, uh, to report, the Governor's Budget did come out. You know, the, the first section of it's, you know, several hundred pages. There's still probably four hundred pages yet to come. We will have attendance at the Governor's Workshop next week. It's both available in person and, and virtually. But, uh, so we'll hopefully get a little bit more information there. There's still a lot of unknowns, and I know we've talked a lot about our transitional kindergarten and funding for that program. That still remains to be seen, so there's still a lot of details that need to be worked out for us. So on a good note, just for education, not specific to, uh, to Laguna Beach, but just for funding and education, it seems like there's a significant amount. The revenue is, is up very, very high. So they're talking about significant investments in education, and I think now more than ever, it's necessary to support all students in our state, so I'm very appreciative of that. And I'll leave more time for others.
I'm very excited about the funding as well, it's a big number. And then this brings us to six E. Mr. Dixon, it's good to see you this evening, and the floor is yours to report on Business Services Division.
Thank you, good evening, I would just echo Dr. Gloria's sentiments. Thank you to all of our staff, certificated, classified, it's been a challenging time for us, for sure, and, and Human Resources, thank you so much for helping us fill the voids where we can, and thank you to everyone that's helped us get through this. One thing that did occur over winter break was a lot of rain. And with that rain, it caused a little delay in our Thurston project. However, as you see out there, the line, the turf is down, the lines are going in, and the project is anticipated to be open by the beginning of February now. So although there was rain that caused delay, it's not a significant delay, and we are looking at the beginning of February, so just a couple of weeks for that project to be done, and students have access to that field, so really looking forward to that. It's very dramatic, if you haven't seen it in person, I do suggest you look at it. It's great to see on our website, too, with the camera we have on the facilities page to watch the progress. But really, when you see this project in, in person, up close in real life, you get the full effect of what used to be a massive field crowned about six feet above head to a flat field now, so, uh, very exciting, and Ryan's done a great job, so we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. This brings us to Mr. Paul, good to see you, your report on Human Resources.
Good evening, thank you, President Norman. Yeah, just to echo everyone else, it's a special thanks to all the district staff who've stepped up with their flexibility in filling our staffing holes just to keep the schools open. We continue to troubleshoot and wanted to thank OCDE, who has provided us with two of their staff members to, to support our, or any vacancies we may have. Each site also has two additional certificated subs and two additional classified subs, just to start their day with a plus four. So that's just helping us kind of get through with those unexpected absences in the morning. As you've seen in many, many emails, or that we have, we have received all of our testing kits for students that are allocated from the state. We continue to give those out another, another day tomorrow, we also have, uh, Jeff, Mr. Dixon and I will be passing out a week from Saturday, as well for families that can't get to the typical drop-off times. And we, we have procured additional rapid tests, so we'd like to, and we share that with the community via email for family members that have a child who is in quarantine and needs to test negative to come back to school, we have, we have those tests available, we'll continue to make those available at the district office. And just a, just a reminder in relation to, if you do have any questions about your, your child in relation to being in quarantine or isolation, to please contact the district nurses, the guidance continues to change. So we ask that you do just contact the, one of the, one of the district nurses, if you don't know their email, just call the school, and they can connect you with the the district nurse who's assigned to your school. And like Dr. Gloria stated, it feels like a lifetime ago, but we did have, on the Monday, it was a non-student day, we had an incredible professional development day for elementary certificated staff, as well as all classified staff. Classified staff had sessions from customer service to CPR to city and school safety. And even Grace Jones led a, a training for our custodial team on how they can support students in, in distress. So we always try to tailor the, the training to really meet the actual job that the person's doing to make it meaningful for them, so we, we continue to work towards that. And then we ended the day with a staff wellness session, where students, where students, where staff were able to pick from yoga to a cornhole tournament, to pickleball, to line dancing, to a beach hike, or if they could, like Mr. Mayberry decided to, uh, climb, uh, climb up to, to Thurston from, from the high school. So it was again, it was a great way of just to, to bond as staff, but also to realize that you have to take care of yourself before you can take care of others. So, and that's my report.
That's a great message. Last but not least, Dr. Mayberry.
Thank you, good evening. Yeah, and I'll just, as you left off on the professional development, uh, we also had a, an emergency operations training built into there. Uh, there was some different work around MTSS, there are instructional coaches help support and lead, uh, along with all the things that Mr. Conlin said. I would definitely want to thank, what, what was really special about a lot of our professional development days is really important, we only get a few of these a year with non-student days where we're doing this training. What's really special about these now is a lot of these sessions are led by our own staff. He mentioned a few, we had, all the staff wellness was led by our own staff. We had the sessions in the morning that were being led around MTSS and interventions that were being supported and facilitated and planned by instructional coaches. So it really adds that personal connection and that extra value to staff when we're leading and building it ourselves, so, uh, thank you to those staff who help do, put a lot of time in prior for that full day of training. And then I did, as was said earlier, but you can't say this enough, just to thank our nurses, Pam Madge and Kelly Schultz. They are just incredible duo right now, and, uh, can't thank them enough for what they do for our students, staff, and community, and parents, and we're just very, very lucky to have them. We have our annual stakeholder survey coming up near to the end of January, that'll be going out, that's part of our kind of comprehensive survey and qualitative and quantitative data that we collect each year. We'll have some student focus groups, uh, well, we've already done, uh, the first round of our, our K-12 social emotional screener. Uh, we'll have some general surveys, we're doing California Healthy Kids coming up later this year, we do technology survey, or later on, we have facility, facilities survey that we do, we also have senior survey right before break, not too long before break, we did one around diversity, equity, inclusion. And so this is obviously one we do this time of year around the middle with our, with all of our stakeholders, but a big part of that supports a way to kind of check in, uh, so we'll be sending information out to families and students and, and staff here later in the month around that. Uh, as was said earlier, we're kind of doing our progress monitoring, uh, coming up here as in progress or wrapping up soon at the elementary and middle schools, and I thank you to the principals for helping kind of lead a lot of that work. We, I heard a recent description of some of the, the leadership our principals are doing right now, it's called whiplash leadership, uh, as they constantly are bouncing between whether it's help keeping staff ready and, and available to just day-to-day problems, so I appreciate a lot of the work they've done in that area. And then, um, as we head towards the beginning of February, I did want to say that reminder February, week of February seventh is National Counselors Week, so as it gets closer, please give a shout out or a special thank you to our counselors that are, uh, helping our kids in so many different ways. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And this takes us to six F, which is Education Elements. And Ms. Paul.
During this presentation, please make sure you keep your microphones off the whole time, otherwise we will get some heavy reverberation. When you're ready to ask questions, Joe will switch back and forth.
Hi, I'm here, Justin Tummers here, I cannot turn on my camera. It's, it's fine if not, I just wanted to make sure folks know that we're here.
Yes, hi, everyone, Zoom says that the host has stopped our camera. So we're happy to just serenade you with our voices and share with audio, if that's the case, you let us know, team.
Well, I'll continue to move us forward. Good evening, we're Education Elements, a national K-12 consultancy who's been working with school districts around the country for ten-plus years, and, and really have the privilege to be working with the Laguna Beach Unified Team over the past year, and it's been a wonderful experience working with their educational equity engagement. So we'd like to just share a brief update about where we are and where we're planning to go in the coming months. It's important, as we give a little background to our methodology, that we bring a design approach that's focused on connecting to, 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 to true challenges that are contextually relevant to you all in Laguna Beach, and then doing what we can in terms of taking in data through stakeholder engagement to really identify what it takes to create more equitable and inclusive policies, programs, or practices within our school and across, within our schools and across the district. So it's really important that we make it clear that we do not come in with a, with any kind of packaged curriculum. We instead work with your schools, your teams, your leaders, to actually design the solutions that you believe are most relevant, most impactful for your community. We work in a phased approach, where we began our work, uh, this particular school year, having foundational level conversations with teams across, uh, with, with, with teams at each school across the district, as well as working directly with, with school and district leaders. We're, we've now accomplished and moved, moved through our second phase, which is our listening and learning phase, where we actually came to, came to you all, um, through different forms and fashions to really engage stakeholders throughout the district to truly understand that the challenges that you felt were most impactful and, and that we should be prioritizing when it comes to identifying more equitable solutions. We'll be then moving to our next phase around strategy and design, and that'll come after we, after we move through and share the data that we have collected through the, the stakeholder engagement phase. So what we were able to accomplish through, from, from November to, through December, right before we went off for break, uh, we had a wonderful in-person experience in the week of December eighth to, to December twelfth, where we, uh, where we were able to see student focus groups conduct over ten student focus groups, connect with over sixty-three students individually, or, or, or through small, uh, collective conversations, and they were also able to have over ten interviews directly with staff at different schools to, again, really gain context around what you all felt like were, were the right focus areas for the district. And then over that time, we also gave a, a survey, a survey that, that there was referenced earlier, where we were able to create open links, there were English and Spanish, and, and we were able to engage over eight hundred and seventy-eight students, which, which, which was really impactful, I mean, we're also able to learn from over sixty staff members and over a hundred and fifty parents and families were able to engage and give us their feedback and their information. So that is, that's, that's the listening and learning phase, that's really important for us, after we've had our foundational conversations, to understand what's important at the school and central office level. Here we go, here's some of the, the, the stats that I was just running through. We, we now were able to really hone in with you all in mind to actually understand what the, uh, what those true challenges are, to make sure that these are not things that are being brought in by outsiders, or that only a few privileged perspectives are sharing, and that instead, uh, we're trying to get as many voices as possible to help us understand the, the right pathways to go to move forward in, and, and we, we're really excited about some of the information that we'll be able to bring to you all moving forward. Mario?
Thank you for giving us that overview, Justin, so this is our listening and learning overview, as Justin said, we have these different phases, and we're just so excited to get data from people whose experiences we want to hear, students, staff, administrators, and so what we'll be doing is, at the end of this week, tomorrow, we're gonna share the initial findings with our Laguna Project team. Then on the twenty-fourth, we're gonna have a leadership readout with various administrators who can really engage with this, uh, data, with this information. We're also going to have a steering team readout on the twenty-eighth, so our steering team is comprised of individuals who both work for Laguna Beach, uh, school district, as well as parents, community members who are really interested and committed to making change in, in the ways of equity, and so this is something that we've been defining in the last year, and we're really excited to get their perspectives. And we have the, we are hoping that we can be there in person with you all the week of January thirty-first, and so we'll be doing something called community readouts, as well as student readouts, and so in the next slide, I'll guide you a little bit more on that. But we plan to be on campus February first, second, and third, and we're really, really excited about that. And so with these community listening and learning sessions, we're gonna be at these different campuses, and we're gonna have the opportunity to share more about this data and really get the perspectives of people who were part of the process, uh, both on the administrator end, but also in ways where people can engage. And so we are really excited to get, again, these different perspectives, and some of the questions that we'll be asking with different stakeholders really fall under some of these buckets, so what did you notice? We really want to see what strengths and opportunities we have for this district and for this community. We also want to hear from people, what, what's surprising? What does this data validate? And then what's inspiring? What are the connections that people are making that can really spark this reflection and action? So that's just only a few of the questions that we'll be asking. And as Justin said, this is, we are, we're going from our phase two, which is listening and learning, to really being able to go and dig into the strategy and design, again, that has been informed now by the people that are really experiencing school, that are coming from elementary, middle school, and high school administrator staff. And now what we're really privileged and excited to do is identify these focus areas and includes voices at the margins to design prototypes that create equitable outcomes for all students, and thinking through what the needs are, especially as both we are thinking about equity work, but also thinking about the current culture and climate that is going on. So we want this work to be really connected to this community, and we're really grateful and curious to see what comes next. Let us know if you have any questions, team. Or if we would like to move on, I know you all have a very action-packed agenda.
Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. Justin, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. So thank you so much for your important update. Because it is, or I'm looking to see if there are any comments or questions from board members.
Go ahead.
I just wondered if there was something written about the responses. Yeah.
Well, right, right now, we wanted, at the moment, to share the raw statistics of who, uh, of, of how many folks were able to engage at this point, because we are, I'm going through a couple of different processes that Mario was sharing to, to ensure that everyone, um, with, in, in small, by a size ways, will get a chance to engage with the actual data that came from it. So, so you'll have your own opportunity to engage in a readout, see, see some of the data on yourself, and then we'll be able to kind of process and think about next steps together. So our goal at this point today was to really let you know whom we were able to, to engage and how we're able to get that done, knowing that we are going through a few different steps to ensure we can bring the information to everyone in an actionable manner.
Thank you, Justin. Yeah, yeah. Okay, thank you guys so much, we look, oh, did you have a question?
Carol, I just, President Norman, I want to make a comment that I'm really excited about the dates that they shared on the community listening and learning sessions, those February second and third dates, because I think that's a very smart approach to try and have everybody welcome. We know that, uh, some people respond well to surveys, some people respond well to come in person, and some people respond well to come in person and share and talk. So I really think that's a smart step by our partners in this and I would encourage everybody to attend those. I also just wanted to commend the middle school students for their participation in those DEI surveys. 58% just remember Perry, since I know you asked about some of the data. 878 total students, I think is fabulous. And having over 500 middle school students take that survey provide us with some data, I really look forward to seeing that as well. So kudos to Thurston there.
I'm in agreement with you. I don't see any other questions or comments. Okay. So thank you guys so much. We look forward to seeing you guys in February.
We're excited to see you all, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we're gonna... With that, we're gonna move to 7A, Clark Osborne. I know there are no speakers here, which is 20... I'll just ask it the way I normally do. Has anyone, have you received a speaker card for those wishing to make a public comment on the 2022-23 LBSD comprehensive district and school safety plans?
No, no comments received. No members of the public are present in the room. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so I don't... This is...
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we're presenting for information the comprehensive district safety plan for the 2022-23 school year. As you know, we bring this plan to the board every year for information first and then action at the February meeting for the subsequent year. So we're approving the plan for the next school year each year. So we're always a year behind in the approval. Before I get into the presentation itself, I just want to point out that we did put a lot of information in the background of the item. And one of the things I would like to point out is though we're going to focus in on the safety plan, there's a lot of information in here that needs to be covered and will be covered tonight. But in addition to the safety plan, I don't want to miss the opportunity to thank Dr. Villeria and the board for the other opportunities that our work with safety has led to in developing and improving the safety plan. And I give some examples on there, but some of the more significant that I would point out is, one, the addition of our social-emotional department in instructional services has been incredibly crucial, not only for our students, but for our campus-wide safety and how we handle all of our situations. And then having the Orange County Intelligent Assessment Center come out and review our sites, the kayak assessments, and being able to implement all of their recommendations. That's a significant step. As they had pointed out to the board, it's rare for them to go out and give recommendations and for all of them to be implemented, and that's exactly what we did. In fact, we've brought them out again for a second review and will continue to bring them out to evaluate our sites because as with anything else, safety is continuous improvement and that's what we want to do. So jumping into the presentation, I'm going to start with the development of the safety plan begins with our district-wide safety committee. And you can see that the committee is made up of a variety of members from all school sites. This year, we have four members from each school site on that committee. That includes the principals, a classified member, a certificate member, and then a parent. In addition, the safety plan, there's work that is called for to be done with the school site councils for their site-specific safety plans, and they're not addressed. However, that work with their school sites is brought to the district-wide safety committee from their members. And then we disseminate that information, work with our subcommittee, which then revises the safety plan, reviews the updates with the entire committee, and then comes back to the board for tonight for information. So a lot of work goes into the plan each year and a lot of people, and I thank all of our principals and staff that help us with it. And it's something that we take very seriously. So as we go through the components on the next slide, I'm sorry, as far as the evolution, like I said, the safety plan is a living document. There's always improvements to be made and documentation and ideas that we want to incorporate. And that's how we treat the safety plan, very much like our facilities master plan. It's something that we continue to learn and grow with. We've done a really good job and I credit mostly Victoria and Ryan Zeta on their work with improving our outreach and really getting the word out to all of our sites and stressing the importance of safety. And we've had a great turnout over the past few years with our safety committee and really expanded the outreach. And it's really been valuable as you see how much the safety plan has evolved over time. And then, of course, our work with our safety consultant has been vital, not only for helping make sure that our safety plan is up to date on all the legal requirements and necessary components that have to be in the safety plan, but also helping us identify new sections or ideas that would help us improve in the resulting emergency. The most recent example is the reunification plan section that the consultant helped us with. And then now this year, again, thanks to the board, coming back and working with us on tabletop exercises, and I'll talk a little bit more about that on a different slide. But it's been crucial. And the next slide, you see the components of the plan. Again, it's very comprehensive. And so you get into the policies and procedures, which is the bulk of the plan. And then you have school attendance and discipline, again, covering all aspects of safety. And then when you get into disaster preparedness and drills, we tend to get more questions on this, so we thought I'd kind of focus in on this section for right now. And you see on the right side of the slide is a sample drill log. That drill log is included in the comprehensive safety plan and that drill log is completed by all of the school sites prior to the start of each school year. So we know when their drills are occurring and by which site. And so all that's compiled, turned into facilities, and so we have that for the year. Those drills are required. And if you go to the next slide, you can see our elementaries and middles. The sequence that they do their drills, elementaries being monthly, and the middle and high school perform quarterly exercises. You see the different types of drills that we're all familiar with: the fire, earthquake, the evacuation, shelter in place. The new one on there that is not required that we are doing this year and we want to continue to do are those tabletop exercises. And to summarize what those look like, it is essentially going through a mock scenario of a real-world situation where you test how you would respond with your protocols and what are your actual capabilities. Now, you may not actually get up and move around and how you would in an emergency, but being able to talk through those and what steps and what would need to be, what would need to occur, not only helps us practice what potentially may occur during an emergency, but that actually has helped shape some of the language and the modifications we made in our safety plans, in our site-specific safety plans, because we may have a capability that is superior in a response that would have otherwise been implemented in a plan, such as maybe the old shelter in place versus the run, hide, fight model, where you'd get away from the danger versus just automatically shutting down and locking in. So these are things that we've been able to work through and the tabletop exercises will continue to give us those chances to do that. So thank you again for supporting us with bringing that consultant in who's done this. And we are excited to begin or continue that work this year with our secondary schools later this year. Another big component of our safety plan has been the help of, in our partnerships with the Laguna Beach Police Department. Of course, we have our school resource program. The Laguna Beach Fire Department has been an invaluable partner for us, also a member on our safety committee. And of course, the city's emergency coordinator. These partnerships are crucial, not only for us to help in planning because they all have different expertises and capacities for how they're going to help the city in an emergency, but it's important for us, when we know as a school district, how the city would respond in emergencies. That information is very helpful in our planning and that's why having them on our safety committee and helping develop and review this plan every year with us has been incredibly valuable and is something that we really appreciate from all of them. So as we look at this year's plan, the only change, the significant change I would highlight is a new section. This is the missing student section was developed by the subcommittee, worked through with a safety committee. And then we also, and I would like to point out, though the board policies and legal references were updated since the last time the safety plan was reviewed, the board had made some changes and deleted some policies in December. And those changes will be reflected in the plan before we bring it back in February. So right now, not all those changes are in there, but we will make those prior to bringing it back in February to update the new policies that were changed back in last month. So as a reminder, on the next slide, this is information-only now. It's a lot of information, though there's only one new section. We do welcome comments and feedback either to myself tonight, from now through the end of the, before we come back in February, to myself and Mr. Zeta. And then, of course, this is something that we're committed to doing annually. And like I said, this is a living document. This is not static and we're committed to updating our safety practice and protocols. And whenever it calls for updating our plan, we will do it. And then you will see it at least annually as part of our safety presentation. So without having to take any questions from the board.
Jeff, thank you for a very nice report. I represented the PTA council meeting this past week and there was an issue concerning a reported incident at one of the high schools with four police cars going there. And there was no proof to that. And Chad and Stacy did a very good job on explaining to the PTA parents about our safety. I think it would be great if you presented this plan to the PTA council. I think it would be very helpful to them to see how all these parts go together. Chad and Stacy basically talked about it, but I think this presentation is just very, very nice. And again, we all referred the parents to the site administrator anytime there is a concern about something happening at a school. Thank you.
I'm so pleased that you keep reviewing it. I think you catch more, you know, come up with more and more details that adds to the safety each time you do it. So I really appreciate and thank you for that.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate also all the work you put into that and all the work you guys put into the safety that covered a lot of things. And yeah, that covers a lot. Students probably feel very safe knowing that all that work goes into thinking and preparing about all different scenarios.
Kelly, Clark Osborne, looking.
Thanks, President Norman. And no, I can tell, I appreciate the summary document. I also appreciate the 145 pages. I do read through the entire document as your newest board member. And you can really tell the emphasis in our district that we have on safety. You can tell by the careful consideration of every box is checked, everything is thought through. If maybe there's some area for improvement, it's included in the next year and very thoughtfully. You can tell on how engaged the committee is in the work, how many people are part of that committee and how each of the sites takes safety really seriously. So if there's an issue in the community, there's an issue from a parent, an issue from a staff member, I feel like this plan really demonstrates how important it is to the district. And I really enjoyed reading it. It makes me feel a lot better that we're really looking out for every student that's on our campus. So thank you.
I just think it's important to note that, because I've asked this question in the past, that this isn't just a document that sits on a shelf somewhere after it gets done, that it's basically required reading. I mean, that the staff needs to be familiar with it and know how to implement the different things that are required in here, but also the practices that we have with the drills. And I know that, I'm very confident that our students would respond the same way. There was an incident within the last month or two that was on the news and the student that was saying that they just knew exactly what to do because they had been instructed and soon as there was, I think it was a lockdown, but they went into the plan and they locked the door and they, all the things that they did, it was so automatic. And so that's, now, things have changed. And unfortunately, we do have to spend the time to make sure that our students are aware of what needs to happen in any situation. I just had one little question, Jeff. Just curious, when you said this came from the subcommittee on the missing student section, was there, what did that arise from? Because I didn't know if we'd had that here or if it was just covering something.
So generally, there was nothing covering what to do in the event a student was missing on campus in the safety plan. So knowing that, we worked with our police department to look at their missing person and we got information from them to help develop that section and work with our safety consultant to finalize it, to tailor it to how we would respond as a school district and what's appropriate for our response. One of the challenges that we've had more recently is students who have a tendency to want to potentially elope from campus. And so, you know, young ones, and we've noticed it more this year. Obviously, I think post with COVID, students who hadn't been in a classroom for a long period of time were kind of readjusting. And so it's really important we have, you know, a strong process to what are our steps? If for some reason a student wants to do that, and what do we do about that? So I know what actions we would take, but it's really helpful to have it written down so that we can refer to it and practice it. And so I appreciate the safety team picking that up and being very thoughtful about that.
One more quick one. I noticed in reading through for the active person on campus drill that the students got to put desks and everything up against the doors. Do they practice that one? I'm sure they would have a lot of fun with that.
I haven't seen them practice that, but I've seen that in multiple training videos as a way to barricade. That's kind of common. And I remember when Cornelius Ashton would go around and do trainings, he would talk about barricading with the run, hide, fight training. So I haven't seen him do it in person, but I have heard them discuss it and I've seen it in the training material.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to practice in person or do you think it would be too disruptive?
I don't think that would be something I would answer, right? Without talking to some safety experts on that. But I think practice in general is always a good thing, but how you practice, I think, especially with emergency preparedness, is you have to be very methodical and careful, especially in dealing with students and young adults. So I would want to ask them about that and engage with potentially the school resource officer and see what their input on that would be. But yeah, I haven't seen at least any intentional furniture throwing.
Okay, thanks. Oh, President Norman, I have one more comment. I wanted to make a comment regarding the power situation. That was an interesting part that comes up, backup power in the safety plan. And so I inquired about the backup power situation with generators and so on. We obviously have portable generators for a short term that would keep things online. But I was really pleased to hear that the district has longer-range plans in our facilities improvement plan, or I'm not sure which exact plan, so don't quote me, but another 140-page document coming my way that we are in the process of building out more backup power from just a school disruption standpoint, too. I know that those can be just disruptive to the day. So obviously, there's a safety concern, but I just wanted to say thank you for including that in your long-range planning and to the board members that might have put that forth before. I think that's important. So I just wanted to call that out. Thank you.
And then I'll wrap up. Jeff, in that, having been a parent of a young child who eloped from school often, and it was, I always felt safe that they would locate him or the dog would or the place would. It's nice that that's in there to just have it in place, right? Everyone knew what to do, but it was, it's nice that it's written in there. Appreciate the sustainability part of having the power. That's what I was, you know, in there and looking at that as well. It's so important. And taking into consideration that we can't do anything without safety. That's why this is such a living document for everyone and everyone knows it and, you know, digs through and learns it. But there's also the anxiety. We want everyone to feel safe. We don't want to make them anxious and cause any other distress through this. And I appreciate the fact that the team always looks at that. And I know when you guys did drills long ago in the canyon, you did them there to avoid those things. And so I really appreciate the fact that you guys do that. You take the whole tale, the whole person into consideration. So thank you for this very detailed presentation. And with that, I think there's nothing else. We're going to move to monthly financials, 7B. And there is no public comment. So Mr. Dixon, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. The report before you tonight is the monthly financial report ending November of 2021. So it's about half of our school year. You will see that the revenue and expenditure trend amounts are following exactly what we would expect as far as our trend line goes. The one deviation you've seen from previous reports is that the expenditures are showing slightly unfavorable. However, all that means is that they are showing higher than our trend line, but they're still well within budget and we're still showing a growth in total fund balance, which you'll find on the second page of the report. And then also, the COVID-19 expenditures, you'll see as of November, we are about 45% of the way through those budgeted expenditures for the year, which is right on track and that falls in line with all of the plans that you've seen coming before you for the ESAR and the early learning opportunity grants. So all those will be included in that amount as you see going forward. So as we prepare the expenditure reports associated with all those plans, those numbers will align also with the monthly financial report that you see for the COVID-19. those numbers will align also with the monthly financial report that you see for the COVID-19 special expenditures. And I just wanted to make that note now before we start getting into bringing those plans forward so that as we start presenting both perhaps at different meetings or even at the same one, that connection can be made and that's why those numbers are the same. And I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you for all the work you put into keeping us apprised every month and through both this budget and then warrants and having conversations with us whenever we need to understand stuff. But your, your door is always open. We all know it and I know everyone always expresses how they can, they can access you for the information and I really appreciate it. Thank you so much. And, and the graphs and the whole thing make it so much easier. So we're so appreciative. This brings us to eight A, which information item, the second quarter report of uniform complaints for the Williamson case settlement. And since there is no one sitting here in public, Mr. Cullen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. And there are no issues at this time to report.
That's great news. My short reports. And this takes us to nine A, which was pulled. So we're going to move to 10A, which is the consent calendar. And since there is no public comment, then we'll move to actually to 10B. And do any members wish to comment or ask a question, not pull any item? For C through K? Or I'm trying to look past and see. No, okay. Okay. Well then can I have a, a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you. And then questions or comments, then I'm just going to start with the book. Natalie, can I have your student provisional? Thank you. And then all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Just fastest we've ever had a meeting. And this brings us to 11A, which is the approval of resolution number 21 dash oh one in support of human trafficking awareness prevention month. Right where I'm at here, sorry. And since there is no one sitting here in public, then I'm just going to speak to this real quick. This resolution is being brought forward as awareness of this important issue and what we're doing about it. Are there any questions before we have a motion? Discussion? I'm looking, sorry, see if there's any questions. Jimmy, your light's on and that's why I, I just saw red. No, I saw red, so I'm looking around to see who's trying to talk. Okay. Well then can I have a motion in a second? Okay. And then any discussion? Natalie, would you like to make a student provisional vote on this? Okay. And then since this is a resolution, Victoria? We could have Natalie too, I'm sorry.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Motion carries five zero. And this takes us to 11B, approval of resolution number 22. And just show to recognizing a state of emergency and reauthorization, reauthorizing teleconference meetings pursuant to AB 361. And since there is no one here from the public, Dr. Valory, you have a floor?
This is a resolution that the board would have to pass in order to hold teleconference meetings. If this so was a desire or need. Without passing this, the board can't host a teleconference meeting. So the rules basically set forth now and the governor recently extended this into March. Late March would allow a board, if necessary, potentially due to quorum or lack of quorum. If people, there was many of you came down with COVID for, for instance, to host a meeting virtually. Or in any case, if the board wished to move to full, to full virtual. But you have to do this every 30 days. And to make that determination that that need exists. So obviously with that, we would also, if the board decides to do this, get some direction on kind of some future things we have in play. So.
Are there any questions, not discussion or comments, but just questions to Dr. Valory right now? Well, that's what we're going to discuss, how to apply. So just like right now, just question.
President Norman, and this would be a resolution we need to approve monthly. So we would see this every 30 days on our calendar and governance? Okay.
When I read through the law.
Yeah. So it's every 30 days. So what we would do is, you know, at the next meeting in February, we would have it, had to come back on there as a resolution for board consideration at that time. So you have to every 30 days have to redetermine that the emergency position still exists and, and make that, make the resolution continue to be active.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
For the future, could this be added to the consent candle calendar?
No, resolution's gonna.
If we pass this and we need to meet virtually, is the public going to be allowed to call in again?
They're still by law. Yes, we still provide all the access by law. You still have to have all that there.
Okay, thank you.
Still all the transparencies. Okay. And then my one other answer, but then, no. Do we have to have, let's read into the law. We have to renew it and a quorum. The three of us have to actually be in boundaries to still do it virtually, right? So it's not like we can all just appear or whatever the comment, okay. Okay. So then with that, can I have a motion in a second and then we can get a discussion? And then if you guys will allow me to leave discussion real quick, it's not my norm because I usually spend most time talking. But the majority of board is well into retire, well into retirement age. And for them, COVID brings a greater health risk. What we need to determine and answer in discussion so we can direct Dr. Valory and he can direct his staff for upcoming meetings. And my best guess from comments you guys have made in past sessions, that we've probably fallen one of these three areas that I'm going to ask you guys to think about. So when I open discussion, we'll try to think about how we want to apply this resolution. Is either one, are we the board recognizing we are still in a state of emergency and applying this resolution for all meetings? Or two, are we the board recognizing we're still in a state of emergency and applying this resolution that if we are all healthy, we'll meet in person, if not virtually. But to reduce the spread, we'll meet virtually for special and emergency meetings. Or lastly, are we the board recognizing we're still in a state of emergency, implying this resolution only if board members are ill and we cannot establish a quorum without meeting virtually. And as we abide by open meeting laws, we don't all know what each other's thinking. So I thought I'd start with Jim and then go to Dee and then Kelly and then Jan. And we'll just kind of get everybody's input of how you think this resolution should be applied because it has ability to be applied in those different ways. So just so that we can, for us and for our best. I thought it was best if everybody just kind of states what they're thinking and how to apply it. Cause I'd hate to pass it and then we have to come back into another meeting to discuss how we're going to apply it. Make sense? Okay. So Jim, you're up first.
I think all three areas is fine with me. Well, do I have to choose one of the three or?
Well, we get, so are you, so are you desires whether this is, we're going to pass this resolution and we're only going to be virtual until we talk about it again in 30 days of the next meeting in February, right? Or that we're only going to utilize it if three of us are ill and so we can't have quorum. Or if we're trying to split that and try to lessen exposure or when we're meeting in the business office, right? Which is different for everyone and we're in a close, like special meetings. Would we want to apply it then or emergency meeting? Do we want to apply it then? And so that is what we're trying to determine.
So would the president in conjunction with the superintendent make the decision on this?
That is another option.
And that's for a most comfortable.
That's important now, I didn't, because I was like, Jim will come up with another option and that's why I had to choose first. Okay. Didn't make you, but asked you to go first also. Okay. Okay. So that option. And then Dee?
Because it could cover all three of those, those issues depending upon.
Depending on what we need.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And Dee?
I'm still, I'm still thinking about it. I wish I had the, I wish I had them in front of me to read too.
Well, as I read through the law, I was just, I was thinking and the resolution, I was just thinking of it and, and comments all of you have made over time. I'm trying to think of the different ways you might think about it. And I did put Jim first, it really wasn't Jim's going to say something else I haven't thought of yet. So it's that this resolution would be for all meetings until we deem to stop booting that or it runs out in sunshine, which was January 1st of next year, right? Don't think it's something we all want. So we do it for all meetings. Or we just do it for special and emergency meetings, meeting in like this for general business meetings. Or we only do it when three of us are sick. Or, or the president superintendent determines based on what's happening, what the numbers are, whatever, you know, what staffing, what's happening with staffing and everything else. So we would just determine. So now we have four options.
Okay, okay. Why don't we go ahead to Kelly and I'm going to look.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay. So Carol, your three options were all virtual. Number one, two, Zoom for special meetings. And three, only go virtual if a majority of the board has COVID, has COVID symptoms and we can't conduct the business of the district. So I think a resolution is prudent. Oh, and the fourth, thank you. Jim was let the board president, the superintendent decide. So I, I think it's prudent to have the resolution. I, I think option three makes the most sense that if we can't conduct the business of the district, then we obviously need to take a virtual meeting. I wouldn't mind having a special meeting virtually, but I think we start to get into a gray zone. So I'd rather like to have meetings one way or meetings another way. So that's my preference. I also like to know what's coming and I feel like by delegating the power to the board president and the superintendent, the rest of the board is a little bit in the dark on what we deem to be an emergency or an unsafe situation. And I'd rather everybody kind of know what was forthcoming. So if I had to pick one, that's how I would like it applied. But I definitely think we need a resolution. We need to prepare. Yep.
Go ahead. I hear from Dan. I think that the third option makes the most sense just because it, it's not if you're ill as much as if you're quarantined for any reason. Or it could be any of our administrators or our staff reps that we could still then have a business meeting because they would be able to meet from home if they couldn't come to the site because of that. They wouldn't necessarily have to be ill, but it would facilitate that. And I just think that we need to meet in person as often as we can with the safety precautions because it is a different dynamic than meeting virtually. So I think we need the resolution so that we're prepared. But I just think, yeah.
Go ahead, Dee.
Yeah, I, I think number three is the best because I don't want to meet just virtually. And I think I, as board member Vickers pointed out, some of us might have to quarantine, even if we're not sick and we could easily zoom in. I think that.
So are you clear on that? Is that good direction before we go and take a vote? Sure.
Since we have to post the meetings as far ahead as we do, things could change between then and the meeting day. So what flexibility do we have to change it? And make it? When did? That was the only thing I was thinking, which I didn't say when I answered it, it was in the back of my mind. You know, if we, if that happened to, you know, the majority of the board or to some of our leadership on a Tuesday, then what would we have to do for?
I'd have to verify, I'd have to verify with legal counsel specific of location change.
A meeting if we didn't have a quorum.
We, the meeting would have to be canceled if we didn't have quorum.
But would we switch?
We could potentially switch the location to virtual. I'd have to verify with legal counsel. Obviously you'd have to have the resolution, we even have that as an option. But I could verify with Mark, with counsel and to, just to determine that, you know, what, what possibility we have of changing the location within a 70, you know, once the 72 hour window passes, right? Cause that's what it would be. So. Sure.
I just want to clarify that when we're talking about holding a meeting because there's no quorum and we're holding it virtually, it's a straight virtual meeting. It's not somebody virtually coming in to a in-person meeting.
I'm so sorry. Yeah. Okay. That's clear? Okay.
President Normandin? I feel like we've done a good job as a board this week in trying to think of new safety measures. Having some people participate from home, other staff members, testing masks or anything else that we need to do as a board to ensure that we are proceeding safely to continue conducting business? Or I guess it was a discussion item. Does all of the, my fellow board members feel like we've taken all the precautions that we can to keep us safe in this room?
Cause I think also the closed session, not having any food, right? Different shifts right now that we can do to make sure that we're keeping everyone safe. So I think that, you know, making sure that we're not eating outside, right? So we eat before and then, I know we asked teachers to go outside, everybody to go outside right now, but so that we just, you know, eat before we come. I think that's important.
Okay, thank you.
But I think everyone masking and the fact that we're all vaccinated and up to date. And I think those are all important pieces to this. So I'm a testing. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So I think. Okay. So then, oh, it's resolution. So I should just pass it over before they do the roll call instead of.
Natalie? No, we're just voting in the resolution. Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. So motion carries four zero. And before we move on with the approval of that, does the board wish to continue to hold the January 25th, 2020 recognition event as in-person event? Hold it virtually? Or would you prefer to reschedule it? And?
This isn't a regular, rescheduled meeting. It means on our calendar as a meeting that we picked a date for. So obviously recognizing this current situation, we just want to get some potential, you know, feedback and direction.
Can I have a description of what the event usually entails? Just typically in a typical year, what it looks like?
Well, it's a lot of students recognize the whole intent that the board created. The, the event was because the old recognition events, the students would literally run in and run out of the boardroom. And the board never had an opportunity to actually engage and talk to the students. So it was determined to hold the event twice a year so that the board would then recognize each student, adjourn from the meeting and then be able to stay and, and whether sometimes see student artwork that was posted around. Student have a conversations with the students. And so that was, that's the goal. Because it really seemed somewhat of a here's your certificate and, and thank you. And then we had to get to business. So we detached it from a business meeting. So that's the purpose. So.
Right. My, my concern also with a shortage of staff and everybody doing everything that. Yeah, that's what, yeah. That's what I was worried about.
That long from now.
Right. It should go calm down and then we should be able to do it.
10, 11, 12 days?
Oh, tough.
I'm for scheduling for another time. I think we're going to get the height of Omicron. And I think from a public health standpoint, it's really the best thing to do is not expose the children, the families to, to the possibility of catching the virus.
I agree. I think it isn't just all the students, it's all their families too.
Yeah, I also agree to reschedule it because I think it'd be really nice to be in person so everyone can engage with each other. But I think during this, just right, judging from the past few weeks, like just in this certain time right now is not good.
Yeah, President Norman, it seems like a great event to maybe have some sparkling cider or cookies or at least be able to drink a bottle of water safely and really, you know, enjoy that. So I would support rescheduling it to a different time in this pandemic surge or maybe in a location, an outdoor location or something. So anyhow, but I, I really don't want the people that are being recognized to feel unrecognized because I think everybody needs more recognition right now or whatever.
So anyhow, but I, I really don't want the people that are being recognized to feel unrecognized because I think everybody needs more recognition right now or whatever their award is that we're giving them. So I don't want it to come across that way.
And perhaps later in the year, we could schedule it at five o'clock or something so it's light and it could be outside.
I think a point too. And so then I'm gonna ask for commitment from my fellow board members to make Victoria, so very happy that when she does send out dates, that we respond quickly to her. That she, she can schedule things and get everyone in place that needs to be there. Yes. Okay, can I have a motion and a second to postpone the date?
Second to postpone?
Okay, and is it? Yeah. We can ratify if anything, too. That's what I was. Okay, and then, um, do you need a roll call for that or is it just all in favor? Okay, so Natalie?
Good with moving the? Yes.
And then all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion carries five zero. And this takes us to, and thanks everyone. Um, this takes us to the governance reporting section and this is board member reports. And Clerk Osborne, I'm gonna start with you.
Thanks, President Norman. And three things to report on. Um, I attended, uh, part of the PTA council meeting with Dr. Kelly. We, as his alternate, we tried to provide full coverage for their meeting. So I went to the first part and Dr. Kelly will talk a little bit about that. Uh, but a wonderful group representing all four sites where we can hear what's happening. Amongst them, I heard a lot about each of the fundraising plans at the four sites, uh, the Jogathon, um, at the top of the world PTA is planning. The talent show that Almora PTA is planning. A Winterfest event, which is a, a new winter themed carnival on the, the beautiful new Thurston Field plan to open in February. Um, on February eleventh and a high school unfundraiser amongst many other activities, but those were their fundraising focused activities. Um, I've also been monitoring the COVID response and wanted to commend every single staff member for what they're doing the last nine days. Um, that's an enormous, um, undertaking. I really appreciated all the robust test kit distribution. The multiple reminders to parents to be able to pick those up. I know that that really, um, took a, a burden off parents right now that are trying to find test kits and test their children so that they can be in school, stay in school, return to school. Um, really appreciated that. I'm also, I'm really pleased to see what's happening, uh, at the state level with our governor and state superintendent and their support for in-person learning. That's very important at this point in the pandemic. And I'm thankful for my fellow board members being committed to in-person learning as well. And then lastly, I'm really looking forward to that new field, seeing all the Thurston students, seeing, um, staff out there, seeing all of our student athletes. Um, it is beautiful and I just am very grateful for all the work that's going into that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Dee, sorry.
Um, I attended the high school PTA meeting and Board Member Kelly gave a wonderful report from all of us, which, um, I'll let him say more about. Quite enjoyed and the speaker was excellent. Um, I also, talking about the governor's budget, he has given sixty million dollars to the arts. And I was invited to represent Orange County and LA County on one of the state boards for the, for the arts called California Creative Corpse to help decide how, how the money would be distributed. And it was fascinating to be with, on Zoom with a, a small group and how efficient it was. And some of their ideas, I thought we could also use what so his ideas to, you know, people in the arts, all the arts have been really hit hard by COVID. But we have other areas too. So he, um, would like the arts to, uh, go along with either public health and COVID protection or go along with, um, the water shortage, water conservation, energy or civic engagement and election participation or social justice and community engagement. Which it was beautiful, the way it's going across all the strands like we would like. That's it, thanks.
I was honored to be asked to, uh, teach in Mrs. Benson's ninth grade class. I talked to two sections on the fire of nineteen ninety-three. My house was the last house it burnt and, um, it brought back an awful lot of feelings and memories. One of the unique things was I tried to tie into it some academic considerations. I don't think our ninth graders read The Bridge of Sanuvus Ray like we did when I went to school. And it's, it's a, it's a great little book about, um, a bridge in Peru that, uh, nine people are crossing and a bridge goes down. And then you want to know who were these nine people? Well, after our house burnt down, the LA Times chose to follow our street and who the nine people were on the street. And they did an article the next day, three days, a week, a month, three months. Uh, and on and on. It was positive on the one hand because it got us a great insurance settlement. But it was, uh, kind of challenging when, um, it was brought up so often. And it was interesting that one of the PTA members, um, who, and who, who was, uh, who was, uh, when I went to the PTA, high school PTA meeting, she was one of the nine houses. And so we had a little talk on the side about what happened to her and to her house. But the, the students were just wonderful. They asked great questions and, uh, it was a, uh, a, a really nice, uh, uh, presentation. They're, they're reading a common book in each of the, each, each of the different schools. And that's kind of something what we always did in my college, that we had a first year book that everyone read. We tried to bring in the, whoever wrote it, bring in for the students to meet that person. So, um, they, they're doing one in ninth grade on, on fire and, uh, it just was, it was tied together very, very nicely. I also attended the second part of the PTA council because the first part of it, I was, I was giving the talk in, in the high school. So I was going from one thing to the next and it was very kind of Member Osborne to cover for me. Uh, by the time I got there, the big issue was about safety and, uh, uh, someone believing that there was an incident and four police cars had gone to the high school on Friday afternoon and, uh, no one from the administration had any information on that. I hadn't heard, heard from that. And so again, we all gave the same message. If you have a concern, uh, call the site administrator. That, uh, that's where, uh, you get your information and they're very easy to get to. And, uh, it helps stop rumors. And that's why I was suggesting that maybe Jeff give the safety plan to the PTA council. That so that the information gets through to everyone, uh, from that perspective. I also, uh, attended the high school PTA meeting, which I didn't know you were there. I would have been more cautious about what I said. But, um, it was also a fun, fun meeting. Um, the speaker was just exceptional. Her name was Lisa Honod. Um, and she's from the Center for Online Safety. And, um, she just gave wonderful tips as far as for family members about, um, she, she started off with an example of a, uh, seventeen-year-old student who, um, gets involved at night with someone online and the, and he does a sexual activity. The person then tries to, to blackmail him on this and, uh, she wants five hundred dollars and he pays the five hundred dollars and he doesn't tell the parents. And then it goes on to the next level where she wants more. And so she involves the parents in this. And then this is when the parent got in touch with this Center for Online Safety and they were able to work this all out. But it was a really, uh, I, I think it's a presentation that all the parents should somehow have access to. And it's a, there's a, a website and it's very, very impressive. So, uh, I was really glad that I got to attend, uh, attend that. And, um, I've been keeping up with everything that's been going on with COVID also, like, uh, Mrs. Osborne. And it's kind of scary. And, uh, I shared with some of you that I was at, uh, we, we're trying not to go out very much during this next six weeks. And, um, I went to pick up food at Gina's today and there were twenty of our students in there, uh, picking, carrying on one on. Only one of them had a mask on and it was just, uh, scary as could be that, uh, and I asked one of the kids, he says, oh, I don't have a mask. And I said something to another one and he put his mask on, but, uh, it's just scary with the infection where it's going that they're not wearing the mask off, once they get off the campus. And, uh, it's going, our numbers are just going to be going through the roof. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I, in the short time we've been back, have attended anything, but I did, um, as a side note, it's something I mentioned to Dr. Valoria. I listened to the webinar that Waste Management did on the new organic waste programs. And they, there was a question asked about that with schools and they've mentioned the, the program that schools already have had. And they already have the, uh, yellow bins at the schools and so it seems that it's not going to be tied to the school sites. Which was, you know, good to me as far as how they're going to be monitoring it. But it will, as far as students in our district, it will then expose them further to that kind of recycling. Because the families, every single household will be receiving one of those buckets to, to use for their organic waste. So it's, um, it's a, it was a, an short webinar, but it ended had a lot of questions from people. So it was good to listen to that. And I just want to com- um, compliment our staff, um, broadly staff on trying so hard to keep all of our parents informed on what's going on. Because what I'm hearing is the information now is becoming confusing. It's changing and there's some feelings of not trusting the information that comes because it comes one day and then it changes the next. Or a different health agency has a different message. And so I think that the, what I'm hearing from our staff is that they're working diligently to try to share the most current information and the information that we're using and what will keep their students the safest. And right now I think that's pretty hard to do. There's, I see a lot of it being addressed in things that are written in and programs that are on the air. That it's, besides the fact of the surge and infection, it's just not knowing what really is happening as far as what they're supposed to do. So I'm glad that we're reaching out to do that. And it's, uh, that's, I think, one of our most important jobs right now. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Member Vickers. Um, I do want to quickly just thank our nurses, all of the employees here, the ones listening, the ones who aren't. For all, all that you guys are doing, the flexibility, the, whatever you do to keep the school stable for families and students and yourselves and faith for everyone. Um, and keep us all on campus and in person and reminding kids to wear their masks. I know when I see them on campus, a lot of them, they, they have their masks on, but you know, reminding on the off-campus too, as, as Member Kelly pointed out. Everybody's going above and beyond for that. I also, I love gardening, composting, sustainability. So I'm so excited about the whole composting thing. Um, like good to know the schools are redoing it. And I want to thank Dr. Valoria for, for keeping us updated and those quick updates with Omicron. I, I found it helpful to feeling connected of what's going on because we do hear from parents and students and, you know, the community. And so just having that piece would, would really did help us balance everything. And, and the honesty, integrity of our dashboard, I really appreciate that. I know, um, not all schools and districts are seeing that they have to report the same way. And so I appreciate the fact that everyone that is positive, you're putting them on there so the community understands what the spread is. So, and us stopping the spread, slowing the spread is part of our mandate as educators, um, as a board. And I want to thank the students for wearing their masks and getting vaccinated, the other rates they have, but you know, been going up and up. So I don't know if you get the email on the data, you know, but as the young ones are getting vaccinated, I get this, um, update up. And it's awesome that they're getting out there and doing that. And, and everyone's gain boosters. And then I am having spinal surgery at the end of the month, so I might not see you guys in February. Hopefully I will. But that's, I was wondering also on the virtual thing, like if it's virtual, I would for sure, but hopefully I'll see you guys, if not, I'll see you guys in March. And, um, governance report. I have one more? Oh, hang on, sorry. No, I'm done. Oh, sorry. Yes, I do have, I think I have two items on here. There's one, okay. So, um, I need to get board consensus because, um, there's not as much board interest in walking in the parade this year. There may be no board interest in it, but since there's not interest in, I may not be capable of walking the parade, right? So, and I. Do we want the staff to have to walk in the parade? If we are not walking in the parade? I think that's one kind of, I feel horrible if I may, if, if we have them walk when it, we're not walking.
How, how does it look to the community if we're not involved?
We, we never walked before. This was my brainchild. Victoria was praying to me to, to add this to something that we did because I love the parade and.
The board has.
At times.
Attended a lot in a car prior to.
That's what I'm saying, they drove. Yeah. I mean, they walked in part, they would drive.
Lots of different, lots of different things.
We, we, we've walked.
Before?
The board has walked, yeah.
Well, we have walked since we've been on the board, but before they used to drive with L and then I think when, then there was a short time when they don't have those cars or didn't have access to them or whatever. Because the, the board used to drive in the old cars.
And so then.
I wasn't there then. I, I did the walking.
Yeah. And so then when we got on the board, I just asked before, can we just walk then? Like, can we just walk? And so it looked weird if it was just two or three of us walking. So then we had all the staff start coming with us and walking with us. And they start bringing their kids and it became a big deal. But now if we're not going to be there. Um, I just wanted, I just wanted to understand whether we thought that, whether we're there or not, the staff needs to be there. Because the staff can also walk on other sites and do other things. They can still participate in it. But I just didn't know, um, what the, what the thought was from the board. I don't want to tell them they have to walk and.
Yeah.
If we're not walking.
Well, I, I know for myself, I'm walking with, trying to walk with two other groups, run up and go back. So it, I'm being part of the community. I think it's, whatever part we're taking in it, I think it's important to be a part of the community, even if it's with a different group.
I look back fondly on when I walked nine times in the parade, like, right? And you just run back and get in again and.
Yeah.
Right? And, and so there's a level of activity. I just didn't, I just want to be able to. They are.
That go along with the student groups. That to me is the most important part. The bands, the choruses.
Right.
And so we have to consider in other organizations that walk in the parade.
That's correct. We have student, that's the only way I walked it nine times. It's my kids working stuff, right? And I run back and walk with them in something else. And then school related and non-school related stuff, so. Um, I'm just trying to give, I, I just want to be able to, um, give them direction if we're not going to walk. I'm hoping to be there. I still want to be there. But I love the parade. I just don't want to ask them to do it if they can't.
Well, well, people think, well, they've done this for a lo- long time. Why aren't they doing it this time?
Like, oh, I don't think people think.
You don't think people think?
No, because, because.
Okay.
Because flights go in.
We didn't, we didn't, we didn't used to do it and then it started and then it.
Yeah, because it had stopped for a little bit around the car, right? And I always remember the cars. And so that was, you know, the board was in the cars in my, in my head, right?
My oldest was in it. I mean, they had whole classrooms do it.
Oh, yeah.
Basically, school kids in the parade. It was, they made, but they also did it on the, um, President's Day. And they had to change it because we took that week off.
Yeah, we used to be required to go in March.
Well, the whole, because the class was, it was about the kids.
Right. And that's what a lot of it's still about, right?
Could we ever maybe mention like clubs at school who are kind of bigger clubs if like they would want to walk in the parade? Just to get more of our district involved to show that like our district's involved. Because I think maybe like some clubs, like even maybe my club would want to participate in the parade. So I mean, it looks good for them and it's also fun to be part of the community.
And would they want to participate in the parade like as a club they're saying, or you're thinking as part of the district and walking?
I think, I think that they'd like to walk as a club. I think you've got, maybe we could just mention if any clubs would be interested in, um, walking in the parade and showing off like your club, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can maybe even help with that, like reach out to the clubs.
The deadline's tomorrow, so I can reach out, I can reach out to.
Oh, the parade's tomorrow?
I know, the deadline to register for it's tomorrow. So I can reach out to.
Yeah, I can run around, ask my friends who own clubs and I can get back to you at the end of the day. I like.
I'll reach out to Dr. Allen. There's a fee involved and some paperwork, so I'll talk to him.
Okay.
Okay, so what's our consensus?
I don't want to have anybody walk that doesn't want to walk.
Okay, fair enough. They can do that, they can do that behind, because I never asked them if they wanted to. I just thought if we're not going, I should bring it up to us of what our expectations are. Okay, fair enough, they can do that, they can do that behind, because I never asked them if they wanted to, I just thought if we're not going, I should bring it up to us of what our expectations are of them. And so that's why, and so, right, like I was trying to be fair of like what's our expectations of them if we're not walking in it. And so so we'll leave it to them if they want to do that or not. Okay.
Just so that, one of the odd, there was a time where it was myself and Carol and and staff. You know, we brought our kids and our and our dogs and everything else, which is, it's great. The odd part is when they read the names of the district and of all the district people, which is you as board members, and it was because it's registered as you, it's not registered as me. It's registered as you as the board. So then, you know, so all your names are red, and the people that are there are not the ones who are being represented. So that's the, so I I bring it up simply because it it is an odd dynamic, and I don't, I don't want the perception to be that you're not there.
Right.
Right, so it's actually, this is less about me and more about you. Because I'm happy to to do it, but I also recognize that when staff are doing it, that they're happy to take part and be a part of the community, since it's more about, are we entering on behalf of the board? Or do you want it just simply to be that this is the district staff, and I'm I'm happy to, we're happy to do it, I just, I don't want to enter on the board and have it where they're reading off your names, and none of you are there.
I would say don't enter it as a board because if I can walk in, I'll be so happy and no one will have to say my name, it's not about that. So I think that makes sense, and then if you guys decide to enter it, I leave that to you, we leave that to you.
Determination.
Right, but if if it happens and I can walk in, I'll.
If the boy ever wants to walk again or driving a car again, whatever it might be, you guys can can do that, I just, I, we won't enter it as a school board. So it, that way we won't have that awkward moment when we come around the corner and.
Because they forgot, because they went through the whole list.
They went through the whole list, yeah.
But I think, um, Dr. Valoria too, you know, just based on our personal circumstances this year, it's walking as a unified board of five is just not in the cards, and with other competing, maybe longstanding, community relationships. But I do think it it brings a broader point into view, which is, that was where the lights dimmed. About finding ways for the board to engage with the community as a unified board, all five of us, whether that's simple things that maybe aren't as extensive and hard to plan as walking in a community parade together, especially given some of the personal situations this year, so. Maybe we could look as a board for some of those opportunities, you know, maybe a a holiday photo or some other ways to engage with the community that aren't as hard to plan, and revisit it next year to see if that's the same decision, sounds great, so.
What date is the parade? Sorry, I just am not sure, March fifth, okay, thank you.
But now it's, now I'm really handing it over to you.
As I mentioned earlier, and we'll and we'll wrap up, but we are, you know, going to be deep into the budget conversation, trying to determine you know, what applies to us as a community funded district. We we will go to the budget workshop, and usually there's a slider to reserve specifically for us, there's a small number of us, obviously, in the in the state. But we just want to be able to determine, you know, when they talk about increases, they don't always equally apply, right? And so we have to recognize and determine, okay, so what is, what does apply to us? What doesn't necessarily apply, the TK is a great example of that. So we'll be heavy into it, Jeff and myself and his team, trying to, you know, weed through all the pages. We'll rely on our lobbyist, which SF two, obviously, and they do a great job on our behalf. They will, would like for us to continue, once we determine if TK is in the bill for us, or if it isn't. That the board worked very hard to talk to the legislature again, and if that's the case, I'll be sure to share the the letters with you that that you can share on our behalf for for funding, and so that, more to come on that, and so I'll keep the board aware of that in the weekly updates until we meet again.
Thank you for that update. And with that, we're at thirteen for adjourning, could I have a motion to adjourn? A second, oh, I didn't read off the night, but we're not having January twenty, so what's the February date, I'm sorry? Tenth, okay, and so our next regular business meeting will be February tenth, twenty twenty-two. And I got a motion digest, second, I'm sorry. Do it, I have a second, I'll second it to adjourn. All in favor? Okay, and as a reminder, BB ninety-two hundred, when we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual authority until we're seated again. And Natalie, I'm sorry, I did not have to review your vote. Okay, 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 motion carries five zero and the time is seven thirty-six. Thank you, everyone.